Evening, everyone. Council has returned from closed session. I'd like to ask Mr. City Attorney to report out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As to the first item of closed-session discussion, anticipated litigation, no action reportable under the Brown Act was taken, although there was unanimous direction to the City Attorney's Office to continue legal efforts on this matter. As to the conference with real property negotiators, no action reportable under the Brown Act was taken. And as to the employee performance evaluation of the city manager, that was continued to the next meeting. Thank you very much, sir.
All right, thank you. And so council will adjourn from our closed session. And before we begin our regular council meeting, we'll just take a quick one-minute recess. All right, good evening. I'd like to call the regular City Council Meeting of Temple City of January 2nd, 2019 to order. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Excuse me, Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Potem Fish?
Here.
Mayor Mann?
Here. And tonight, for the invocation, we have the pleasure and honor of having Pastor Jim Walden from the First Baptist Church located at 6019 Baldwin Avenue. For upcoming First Baptist Church events, you can visit their website at www-templesitybaptist.org or call the church office at 626-286-3125. Can everyone please rise for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pastor Walden.
Thank you. Let's pray. Father, thank you so much for a new year, and we thank you for Temple City. And God, the servants you've given us with the city council and the leadership here. I love them and appreciate them so much. I know they've had a long day. Would you bless them? Thank you for what they are striving to do on behalf of all of us. And when we agree, help us to agree with joy. And when we disagree, help us to do so with great respect. Thank you so much for what you've done and what you're going to do. In Jesus' name, we all say. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Walden. I'd like to ask Ms. Lucy Liu to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Liu. So tonight, we do not have any ceremonial matters and presentations. So we are going to go straight to public comments on items not listed on the agenda. I know many folks here are here to speak on one particular issue. So out of respect for the folks who aren't here to speak on that issue, I'll ask them to go first. So first, we have Cliff...
Who?
Who, okay. And I understand you and Steve want to speak on the same thing, but only if you'd like to combine your time together to you, that's fine, if that's what you would like.
Yes.
Okay, great. Please, please come up.
So Happy New Year, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Cliff Hoel, and I am a resident of Temple City. I have been working at the Los Angeles County Sanitation District for three years. I am an ASME member who's speaking on behalf of nearly 1,000 fellow employees across six bargaining units at the sanitation districts. As you may know, the sanitation districts oversees a vast infrastructure of solid waste and wastewater operations for 78 cities, including this one, countywide. Our work in science and engineering is vital to both public and environmental health. The workforce takes great pride in the industry recognition we receive year after year for delivering world-class services as well as exceptionally low rates to residents. For example, the Orange County Sanitation District charged their ratepayers nearly double what we do. So you might be wondering what has brought us here. I'm here due to the unfortunate fact that the sanitation districts are embroiled in labor management turmoil, and our longstanding impasse in negotiations could spill over to the communities we serve, including Temple City. Despite the excellent service we provide, the sanitation district's negotiating team is attempting to cut our total compensation for no good reason. Over the course of our negotiations impasse, we have been through both mediation and fact-finding. The fact-finder confirmed two very important facts. First, that the districts can't afford what the sanitation workers are asking. And second, what we're asking won't increase rates at all. Not only are the districts attempting to hurt its employees without financial or other good justification, but they are attempting to bully us into submission by holding our last two years of COLA hostage, even though they have already collected the money to pay for them. The fact is that numerous cities across the districts have negotiated for employee payment of their pension contribution and offer them a corresponding raise and a little bit more for cost of living. Our union is asking for the same arrangement. To be clear, we are willing to pay our fair share, but we're not willing to be abused. In two consecutive polls of ASME's membership, the majority said they would not accept the district's arbitrary painful takeaways and would take job action up to and including a strike, if need be. While we don't relish that prospect, it's time to raise public awareness more broadly now because the policy decisions of the districts will eventually affect every city that we serve. We believe that it would be disservice to everyone for the sanitation districts to further demoralize its workforce, which will only hasten attrition rates and make the challenging task of hiring the most qualified employees even harder. Because of all this, we urge you to sign a letter asking the sanitation district's senior management to withdraw its unreasonable proposal. I appeal to the district director, Mr. Mann, sitting before us, as well as every one of you, to exert your influence to facilitate an immediate agreement that will serve everybody's best interests. Thank you for your time and support in this matter.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Next person I'd like to call up is Ms. Feng Liu.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to thank you two city members because I saw Mayor Mai and another council attend the Airmonti City Council meeting on December 18th, which was a big event for this area. Thank you. And also, thank you to City Attorney for writing opposing later to City of Airmonti about their marijuana project. Thank you so much. Second, I want to... The reason I'm here today, I think Temple City should stand up for Temple City and for people file lawsuit against City of Airmonti and the marijuana developer. Why I'm saying so? Because I'm a lawyer, I'm a practice private law... Private practice lawyer. We, since November 27th, we have hundreds of volunteers working on this project. We had like over 20,000 signatures, over thousands of people protested at least twice. We have hundreds of volunteers working on this project. We had a lot of findings. So my conclusion is if Temple City fire lawsuit, we have bigger chance to win this case. We can win on injunction immediately. Why? We... I can give some examples. City of Airmonti have done so much illegal things. First, they violate... They have so much due process violation. Why? They didn't give any reason, any notice. My house is very close to the project. 4400 Temple City Boulevard. Nobody in my neighborhood received any notice. Even across the street, they are 55 feet away. Nobody received any notice. That is due process violation. Also, there's the Brown Act violation too. Example, on December 18th, so many people attended the meeting. The city didn't give any help to anybody. So many people blocked outside the meeting room. That's totally violated people's Brown Act rights. Also, city... Because I'm a lawyer, I'm a practice private law, private practice lawyer. We, since November 27th, we have hundreds volunteers working on this project. We had like over 20,000 signature, over thousands of people protest at least twice. We have hundreds of volunteers working on this project. We had a lot of findings, so my conclusion is if Temple City fire lawsuit, we have bigger chance to win this case. We can win on injunction immediately. Why? We, I can give some example, city of El Monte have done so much illegal things. First, they violate, they have so much due process violation. Why? They didn't give any reason, any notice. My house is very close to the project, 4400 Temple City Boulevard. Nobody in my neighborhood received any notice, even across the street, they are 55 feet away. Nobody received any notice. That is due process violation. Also, there's the Brown Act violation too. Example, on December 18th, so many people attend the meeting, the city didn't give any help to anybody, so many people blocked outside the meeting room. That's totally violate people's Brown Act rights. Also, city, another reason, this city council, I have five city council members. We have evidence, four city council members received the campaign funds from the developer and the landlord, two of them directly, another one, two indirectly. This, 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 by campaign law, that's not illegal, but whatever city council, city mayor act was illegal, they received the campaign fight totally influenced their decision on this project. I give one example. People whoever was support the marijuana project, people whoever from the developer side, they didn't need to stay in the line. City, I heard people saying city mayor told them, oh, people who stay supporting the project, they went inside the meeting room without staying in the line. People who was opposing this project was blocked by so many police, nobody was allowed to go inside until like 7, 6:00 PM. But the people were supporting the marijuana project, developer, developer side people, they went inside like 4:00 PM, 3:00 PM, whenever they come in, police allow them to go inside. Why? Because four city members received the campaign fund from that. That's, that is, by campaign fund, not illegal, but that influenced their decisions.
Ms. Liu, I'm going to have to ask you to maybe keep your comments shorter.
Oh, okay, okay. I, I, I make it short. There's illegal wave, the CEPA waiver, CEPA is California Environmental Protection Agency, that the waiver in their agreement is illegal. And also, there's DTSC waiver, by, by the California DTSC report, 13 acres was contemplated, but 4400, 4410, 4350, three lots are all totally contemplated by this CEPA regulation. They should completely shut down. But Temple City, El Monte City, only 14350 is, has agreement with DTSC, other two, they covered everything. That's illegal. That's illegal. People's, put so many people's life, so many years, on the very dangerous condition. So, I make story short, we have very good case to win the case. Please, Temple City, council, city attorney, please fire lawsuit, please fire injunction. We can win it. We, we, people from Temple City, we can help you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, so I apologize for not clarifying the rules, but out of respect for everybody in this room, we shouldn't assume that everyone's on the same side on certain issue. If you could please maybe hold back the clapping, out of respect for everyone, I would ask you to please do so. Also, I failed to mention that our comment period is three minutes. I failed to mention that to you, that's why I gave you some extra time, but please, please do try to keep your comments within three minutes, out of respect of everyone who wants to speak tonight. So, thank you. Next, I'd like to call up Ms. Lucy Liu.
Good evening, council. Good evening, city manager and staff. I'm also here for the same subject. I'm waiting patiently to see what the city's next step will be, but I do want to voice my concerns, one of which is the fact that our city does ban any marijuana cannabis-related activities, but having these locations so close to our city borders, there's no doubt their delivery vans are going to be driving through our city streets, and these are delivery vans that are going to be delivering quantities for wholesale, which means it's going to be large amounts, more than, you know, what you need for just a single or dual sale. So that's very concerning that you're going to have these large quantities of whether CBD or THC or whatever they want to call it, in trucks that are driven by drivers who are not, don't carry guns, and trucks that are not armored. So, driving through our streets, that's one concern. The other concern is, I was able to intercept the mayor, Mayor Quintero, during the last break outside of city council chambers on the meeting of the 18th, and I, you know, asked him if there are going to be a moratorium, because, you know, once you say yes to one, all they have to do is follow the footsteps and, you know, pretty much cross all the dots, cross all the Ts and dot all the Is and make their project look very legit on paper, then they can't really say no to any of these projects. So, you know, and he says, you know, if I didn't misunderstand him, they don't, they won't be able to put a moratorium on the number of facilities that do come in. If they do, they have to start with this one, and they're not starting with this one, so that's why, that's not going to be a situation, that's not going to be possible. But then, once this starts, then there are going to be multiple facilities, obviously, that are going to follow. We already know the nine addresses that are all on the northern El Monte, southern Temple City borders. If they maneuver their way around Sequa, as with this one, they're going to get more in, it may be three, four, before finally a negative environmental impact will be declared, but at which, at that time, you already have three or four, and if each of them are given 30-year contracts, 10-year contracts, 10-year contracts with two options to renew 10-year periods thereafter, that's 30 years of facility that, you know, is a very big concern for residents, obviously, you know, for the safety, for, I love law enforcement, but the fact that the police chief says they have enough personnel to handle any issues that may come up, I think is an unrealistic statement. They will be reimbursed for any law enforcement costs, but what about if our sheriff's department has to go back up for anything that happens on our side of the border? Who do we bill for that? You know, are our residents going to end up having to pay for that? It's really not fair. They're not really being a good neighbor. And, you know, I don't have to tell you guys, we all live in the city, we love the city, we want to keep it safe, so please, as I pled with you last year, you're our parents, we're your children, protect us as you did last year. Thank you.
I think I might have to say it again, but please refrain from applauding as much as you want to. I think everyone knows where each person stands with respect to this issue, so. Well, thank you, Ms. Liu. I'd like to call up Mr. Steve Stafford.
Mayor Mann, Mayor Protemper Fish, councilmember city staff. I tried to attend the meeting on the 18th in El Monte. I think, I've, I know that Mayor Mann and councilmember you were down there. I could not even get a speaker's card. I've been told here, they ran out of speaker cards and tried to print some on white paper. Nobody could get ahold of them outside. And I was also seeing they were letting the people that were for the marijuana manufacturer in there. There is very good grounds, just with me alone, because I'm disabled, and I have disabled cards on my truck, because I've had rheumatoid arthritis since I was three years old, sometimes it's very hard for me to walk. And this was one of those nights, and they had me sitting down on the cold floor outside. I had people throwing signs at me, kicking me. I ended up, for Christmas, having the worst backache I ever had. It lasted for almost two weeks. My back was hurting, my neck was hurting, I had headaches, I was walking very hard sometimes. I have a friend saw it when I went down to his house in Hinkin Beach for Christmas. I was in tremendous amount of pain. I'm now taking penicillin because the rheumatoid got active, and one of the common things is it travels around the body. It's already flared my joints, and now I got bronchitis, very common thing. These people had no business having the hearing where they had it. I met with a couple El Monte police officers, because I wanted to file a complaint on all the officers, because they, they broke the law. They, you just don't walk around like a circus. And that's what it was over there, a circus. People were getting hurt, they didn't care. I'm, I'm one of the ones that paid the price, and I'm handicapped. You cannot leave a handicapped person outside. You have to get them in there. If it means getting somebody out that's not handicapped, you have to do it. That's federal law. There's no ways around it. They had the ramp for handicapped people, the door locked, they had wooden barricades around the small lot behind City Hall, blocked with barricade. That is against the law. And this El Monte police lieutenant named Kano made some very racial and very personal remarks about LA County Fire that were very mean and very disrespectful. And I let the, before I came here tonight, I went over to the fire department and let the captain know there, and he's letting the battalion chief, as we speak, know about his rude and just mean comments. One of the things he said, and it bothers me, he said, "Well, the battalion chief, he just got promoted, he has no brains." That came from Lieutenant Kano, a lieutenant at El Monte Police Department. You don't make those kind of comments. That, he's the one that put this together, and he told me himself, "I put it together, I said, 'You can't do it the way you did it.'" He goes, "I don't care. I don't care about you either. You guys need to sue this city. I can tell you, there's one person in this crowd, I might go into the DA's office and have him criminally prosecuted, because they deserve it. You don't treat me the way I've been treated. They violate my rights exclusively, they don't care. Nobody cares down there. It's time to clean this city up and shut it down, if it means that. Because I don't deserve the way I was treated. The fire department that serves them doesn't deserve the way they were treated. This police department went back to its old days when I was in high school. It's not a police department. I would invite all of you to talk to this lady here in the red and get on her list, because we're going to the DA's office, and people are going to go to prison. Thank you."
I guess I'll probably have to say this every time after each comment, but please don't clap. All right, thank you, Mr. Stafford. Next, I'd like to call Mr. Danny Sam.
Hi, good evening, mayor and city council staff. My name is Danny, and I am a resident of Temple City. I'm here to opposing the marijuana facility dispensary on Temple City Boulevard in El Monte, and would like to share my growing concerns about our community and El Monte's approach to dispensary approval, which I will explain. First of all, I'd like to express my appreciation and gratitude to the Temple City Council for all your effort and support in opposing the marijuana dispensary facility on 4400 Temple City Boulevard. Like you, I have the same concerns as which were addressed in the city's lawyer letter to El Monte Council with regards to primary environmental and safety issues. It was extremely unfortunate that the majority of El Monte Council, city council, and their mayor has agreed that the tax of the marijuana dispensary business has a greater benefit and has approved the marijuana facility on December the 18th, with disregard of our community concerns. Today, Temple City is built to be a safe, clean, and high-quality community. We live here, work, pay our taxes, raise our childrens with great schools. I have moved to Temple City in order to protect my childrens from outside influence of drugs and are proud to be a Temple City resident. However, El Monte has made a decision that has potentially bring harm, crime, moral decays, or increased monetary burdens to our Temple City community, and all people who live here will be impacted. El Monte City also stated that they would be using their marijuana dispensary revenue to fund an increase in law enforcement, but at the same time has no concerns of increasing safety and security towards their neighboring cities such as us. Nonetheless, El Monte's acceptance of the legal marijuana is of a Trojan horse. Metaphorically, a Trojan horse has come to mean any tricks that causes a target to invite a foe into a secure, protected place. A Trojan horse here comes under the idea of supposed increased tax revenues, as they suggested, but while, as we all know, the danger inside of the horse is a known drug with potential harmful effects, marijuana, which is completely being ignored here. Before you know it, El Monte may approve a dozen more of these marijuana facilities to be followed, as mentioned by someone earlier. When El Monte made the decision to bring this drug into community, they have also became morally responsible for any harmful consequences that it brings with it. They have failed their commitments to the public service and its community health. I hope that you are going to continue working with us to make sure the marijuana dispensary warehouse don't get here and keep up with the escalating problems of marijuana dispensaries and their process. Moreover, we as residents will keep supporting the city council, and as usual, please do let us know if there are anything that we can do to cooperate with you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sam. I'd like to call up Mr. David Chu.
Hello. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I'm David Chu, CHIU. I'm in Temple City, 1988. Yes, I'm old man. I like here, School Street, neighborhood. Thank you very much. All right. My concern is safety, security for our children. My children's older now. However, city of El Monte set up ordinance 2924 by their own rule for air pollution, water control, electricity. They thought, they set their own rule. However, when they sign the agreement with those investor, they say nothing to do with El Monte. You take all the risk, including federal law. That's no, no. They have to take responsibility, that's number one. Also, thank you, Temple City, let me, allow us know, there's 11, okay, they approved by the city of El Monte. There's more. I heard about, there's A more. So far, the 11, 11 will have 670,000 square feet, the building square feet. I think that there's, that there will be A more. We talk about terrible, terrible number, terrible number. Also, I do search the task code with the piece 4350, Temple City Boulevard, I did search, so I have the all information, okay? This site been contaminated by 1,000 ton, tons metal, the underground water been contaminated. So Department of the Task Force Substance Control asked them to clean up, to clean up. 4350, they convey the title to a new company called El Monte SSLRC. They want this company to responsibility for, for the cleanup. So they want to sign a agreement between Department of the Task Force Substance Control with this company. Same thing, not only on this parcel, okay? We need to check the 4400 Temple City, because the report says 13 acres. 4350 only have seven acres, okay? So probably have two, two more parcel been contaminated. This is a very, very important issue. So we gotta stop right away. Probably we need to ask them for Phase 1, Phase 2 report on both property. 4400 Temple City, 4350 Temple City. Okay, we need to stop coming.
44102.
Okay? And we cannot check the, not yet, 4410. Okay? Also, there's another parcel, 4819 Temple City Boulevard. It is a same facility? I don't know. Do you know anything about it? There's additional parcel for marijuana facility.
So, Mr. Chu, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to maybe wrap up your comments.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, I'd like to call Ms. Belinda Chu.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. And about six months ago, I went to 160A supermarket, and then when I parked my car, I sm-... and then when I parked my car, I smelled something. Very, it, it smelled like scum, and it makes me sick. And then I talked to my husband, "Why, why scum come out at lunchtime?" He told me, "No, it's not scum, it's marijuana." It's the first time I have contact with marijuana. And then my, my husband pointed to me, "There's a teenager in front of the rapper store. There's a rapper store there." And then it makes me very worried. "Why, he's still teenager. He's smoking marijuana there in, in the public, in a, in a big shopping mall." Oh, not, not shopping mall, the, the, the mall. And then last month, my son, he's in high school. He told me, "Mommy, I know there are some people in the 12th grade, they smoke marijuana. That makes me very, very worried about our children." And then now, I know El Monte City, they want, they approved the marijuana factory next, just next to our beautiful Temple City. So that makes me very worried about our children, especially the teenager. They think marijuana is okay, it's legal, it's okay to, to smoke marijuana. And I talked to one of my coworker's son, he graduated from Cal Poly. He said marijuana is okay, it's not harmful. Why are you against it? So it makes me very, very worried about our children's house. I hope Temple City can do something about it. Thank you.
All right, next, I'd miss, I'd like to call up Alan Poon.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Well, thank you, and Happy New Year, Council.
Could you state your name? I'm sorry.
Oh, Alan Poon.
Thank you.
P-O-O-N. I am Temple City resident since 1993. Thank you for the opportunity for me to express my concerns about the cannabis issue in El Monte. The scary thing is that I heard that there are 10 or more of these applications on their way, and the city of El Monte only sees the additional taxes and revenues from this kind of business. One opens, it's likely to open like opening a floodgate. Many potential cannabis operations will flood in, and pretty soon, the St. Gabriel Valley will become a cannabis valley. Although cannabis is legalized in California and some other states, it's still an illegal drug at the federal level, and furthermore, it's definitely as illegal as heroin, cocaine, and other notorious drugs in most of the world. In some countries, possessions of, possession of a small amount of marijuana may carry even a death penalty. So it's a psychological effect, I see, to the, to the majority of the people who may become future home buyers in the St. Gabriel Valley. Cannabis is still a drug. No matter how hard you educate them, they may not, they, they may be able to swallow the fact that it's legalized, but they just cannot accept a cannabis center in their neighborhoods. If it becomes a reality, it is very likely that future potential home buyers would back away from Temple City. Acadia, San Marino, and even the entire St. Gabriel Valley. This is the psychological effect that we may have to think about, have to look into. At the 1218 Council meeting in El Monte, one El Monte citizen asked, "It is the business of our city, El Monte. Why do we let the people from Temple City to tell us what to do?" Well, the proposed cannabis center is closer to some Temple City residents than many El Monte houses. That is why, with one or more of this kind of business in this area, potential home buyers will be scared away, and property values are going to drop very likely. And this is the beginning of the ruin and destruction of our communities, communities and our beloved Temple City, and that no cities in this St. Gabriel Valley can escape, El Monte included. So to recap, we sincerely ask our beloved city, Temple City, to do whatever or to file an injunction to stop El Monte from carrying on this project. We are fighting against building a cannabis center next to our city. We want to protect our homes. Here in California, it is no use to fight against cannabis, but any growing facility should be built at least 10 miles, I think, away from the proximity of our residential areas. Thank you.
So I'd like to ask folks in the audience to please refrain from shouting while someone else is speaking. Thank you. All right, lastly, I'd like to call up Mr. Alan Zhong.
Really, it's very cold. I do not want to spend the gym. So I, I kinda nervous.
Oh, can, can you please speak into the mic, sir?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Honorable Temple City Mayor and Councilmember. I'm Alan Zhong, City of El Monte residence. On behalf of many concerned El Monte residents, we would like to really appreciate the honorable Temple City Mayor, Ms. Ma, and City Councilmember, Ms. Yu, attend the El Monte City Council meeting on December 18, 2018, to support us for, against the so-called medical cannabis factory at 4400 Temple City Boulevard. Okay, I have many things to say, but I'd like to share a Temple City Elementary School student's voice about this marijuana factory. I met him and his mother when I was collecting the signature in a shopping center. By now time, this boy knew what I was collecting for. He explained to his mother, then he tell us, as a student council member, he discussed his, this marijuana factory with many classmates and schoolmates, all of them strongly against the factory with many reasons. Mainly because the marijuana factory is located in walking distance from their Temple City Elementary School. Then he turned to me and asked two questions. One, why your adults do such a thing? Okay, two, why your adults don't even listen to our kids' voices? Okay, I was speechless and felt so guilty as an adult, okay, as a father, in front of this boy with innocent eyes and helpless voice. So my heart has been broken since then. So as an El Monte residence, I come here six and a half years ago relocated in this area. I lived in Temple City for one and a half years. I really witnessed for the short time, you know, Temple City, including El Monte, is built up. But right now, those kind of, you know, everybody got effort to build up this area will be destroyed, not one, not two, but 10, 20? Because our mayor, El Monte mayor, said, "Why all the empty, you know, the warehouse is empty. Let's all grow in marijuana." We do not against medical use. In fact, I meet many people during my signature correction, ask them about medical use. First, if I ask them, they say, "Oh, we, you know, do not sign this petition." Then I said, "Why?" "Because they say marijuana user, they are medical use." Then I explain to them, you know, "We do not against marijuana use, medical user, but the factory so many in a small city will affect all the area." Honestly, all of them finally signed the petition. I tell them, "Tell your friend, no marijuana factory in El Monte, in Temple City, in all St. Gabriel Valley." Thank you, let me speak here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Zhong. So before we wrap up public comments, I do want to make two, two quick statements. One is, several of you have pointed out that myself and councilmember you attended the El Monte City Council meeting, but please understand that that wouldn't have been possible without all five councilmembers to allow us to go. We had a, we had our own meeting that day where we needed to conduct city business, and if more than three of us was gone, then we wouldn't be able to run city business. So I, I think everyone should extend that acknowledgement to my fellow councilmembers as well. And secondly, some of you have mentioned, you have, and I've just checked with Mr. Cook, our city manager, and Mr. Murphy, our city attorney, some of you mentioned you had some documents related to research that you've done around the area. If you'd like to share those, you may submit them to the city. And I think Mr. Cook and Mr. Murphy can coordinate with you on how to get those. Oh, city clerk? Okay, sorry. City clerk's office at City Hall. Ms. Peggy, Peggy Quo here. She will be able to collect any documents you're willing to submit. So at this point, I'd like to ask if there are any other folks in the audience who'd like to speak on items not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, I will close public comment, and we will move on to the consent calendar, item 7. Do we have any comments or a motion for the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote on the consent calendar item, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fish?
Yes.
Mayor Man?
Yes. So the consent calendar has been approved. Our, I'd like to ask everyone to try to remain quiet. We do still have remaining items to discuss. Thank you. If you'd like to speak, you could always walk outside. All right, so moving on, we do not have a public hearing. We do not have unfinished business, nor do we have new business. Moving to update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Man. I have one item tonight. Late last year, you approved a subsidy program with the Ring Program. We will actually be rolling that out on January 24th. If you remember, that Ring Program provides a subsidy to Temple City residents if they buy a Ring device. There's been some updates, and over the holiday season, the incentives are pretty good, so... And Ring is actually rolling out some additional products. So that'll be, we'll be sending that out via social media and everything else in, starting around January 24th.
And that will also be available on the city website?
City website, social media, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's it for tonight, sir. Happy New Year.
And that will cover both people, new users, and also people who already own Ring devices as well?
Uh, thank you for that one clarification, Councilmember Yu. If, for those who participated in the last program, they would not be eligible, so no double dipping. You, you'll, if you're a new participant, that's who will be able to participate.
But you get a discount for additional devices?
Yes, you get a discount for additional devices as well if you participated the last time as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Happy New Year.
Yes, thank you. Moving on to update from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, at the end of the closed session, I, I reported out that the city council had given us direction to continue our legal work on the El Monte cannabis facility, and we are doing that. In light of the comments that I heard tonight at public comment, I would just advise the people of Temple City that several of the comments raised issues that, while very important to the people themselves, would be, if they are legal complaints, would be legal complaints that the individual has to file. The city certainly is going to move forward with our legal work and will be advising the public of what we've done as, as the law allows us to, to give that advice. But in terms of some of the, the issues raised tonight, they really are personal legal issues that the city cannot move forward on everything, and some of those personal issues do require the individuals involved to take action on their own. So I, I have listened, I've taken note of everything that was said tonight. I will, as I say, continue the work that you've directed me to, to move forward with, but I also encourage people to investigate their, their own avenues on this matter. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, we have council reports on ad hoc or standing committee meetings. I understand we do need some direction for next steps regarding the Parks and Rec Commission vacancy, but I believe...
Yes, I'd like to know that.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Because I know we, we have a ad hoc committee set up for that. Is there, what's, what's already will of the ad hoc?
I think we disbanded, didn't we?
I thought so.
We don't have an ad hoc anymore on that?
Yeah.
That was disbanded.
You disbanded, you disbanded, so you would have to reconvene it.
Oh, I see, okay. So unless there is any, what's your...
I have a question. Do we know how many, how many applicants we have?
Four.
Can maybe Ms. Ms. Quo?
The ad hoc was actually reestablished in December.
Oh, thank you.
Great, the members before, and who, and who is on it?
Councilmember Yu and Councilmember Chavez.
Okay, that's all.
So item H?
Oh, I can see, okay. Couldn't see that far down. Good job.
So, so unless there's any objections, maybe we can have the ad hoc committee convene to do that?
There, well, I, I thought of it a little bit, but being given the fact that we only have four applicants, it, I don't think we necessarily really needed an ad hoc. I thought the full council should interview the four applicants. That'd be my recommendation.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, so that can be something we can place on the next city council meeting as an agenda item?
You can place it as an agenda item, or as you've done in the past, call a special meeting and, and go through the interview process.
Special meeting.
Okay, so we'll figure out a special meeting date for that specific item?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any other reports?
And we're working on a joint school district, right?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to, I don't want to forget about that. Thank you, Brian.
Okay. All right, if there are no other reports, we're moving on to items separate from the regular agenda, starting with Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Mayor Man. You know, it's already, it's been, what, 10 years since we were elected, Vince? Nine, 10 years?
Yes, this is the 10th year.
You know, we've gone through so many things in those 10 years, it seems like, and, you know, for the most part, and again, speaking for myself, you know, being a councilmember can, can go through a lot of different emotions and, and feelings, and, you know, sometimes it gets a little tedious. But it's, I think, nights like this where it makes me feel that it really is, is worth it. And what I mean by that is, over the years, we faced different issues as a council. We've, we've, we've ruled in different ways. But one thing that was constant, I think, and I think most of those who've come before us can appreciate it, that we do give you the time and we do give you the voice, and we listen. And I think as elected officials, that's really what we're supposed to do. And I'm very proud of that. I'm very proud of my colleagues and, and the work they put in. And one thing I think that people will realize when they come to Temple City is that you always have a fair hearing, you always be allowed to be heard. We may not make decisions that please everyone all the time. We're many times like umpires in a baseball game. We please half of them, and the other half don't like us, but that's the way it goes. But I think what we try to do is we try to make intelligent, informed decisions, and one way of doing that is by listening to all of you. So I just want to thank all of you for coming. I know all of you didn't get the opportunity to speak tonight, but you were here to listen, and you were here to get, give support. And whatever decision we make, of course, I think you can feel comfortable in the... And whatever decision we make, of course, I think you can feel comfortable in the fact that we will give it all of our thought, and give it all of our, you know, work, and put in all the time that we need to make that decision that's best for all concerned. So I just want to thank you all for doing it, and making our job easier and much more rewarding by being part of the decision-making. And maybe that's what separates Temple City from other cities, I don't know, but hopefully we will continue to do that. So thank you very much. And no clapping.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Chavez. Councilmember Sternquist?
Just hope everyone had a happy new year. I too want to thank all of you for coming out this evening, and for your friends and neighbors who needed to leave. I think you know from just the letters that our city attorney wrote to the city of El Monte, that this council has your interests along with our own interests in mind. Most of us up here are friends with the members of the city council of El Monte. We've worked with them in the past, we see them at different conferences, out in different events. And I can tell you that anytime any one of us, since this grow facility has come on into the public's view, we also were as surprised as you were that there was pretty much a total disregard at the recent meeting, where many of you weren't able to voice your opinions and had to stand outside. I can tell you that with this council here, that would never happen. We would ensure that we would move the meeting if we needed to, even outside, but there wouldn't have been special priority given to people who had a different point of view from another group. Everybody would be treated equally. And I also want you to know that every one of us up here has the same genuine concerns as you do. Every one of us up here are parents, raised our children in this city, are concerned about public safety, are concerned about the effects that this might have directly and indirectly, not just on the people that are living across the street or nearby, but throughout the city. I think we all value the same things, and that's why we choose to live in this city. And I think, I would love to see all of you here at every one of our meetings. So I welcome you back at any time, and I want you to know, as the one person gentleman said, let us know if there's anything that we can do to help you. That is music to our ears. We don't want to work independently of you as five different council members, we want to work with you. And to have you come and have a representative of your group share that with us is very heartwarming. And I can tell you that with all the work that we do to maintain the quality of life that we have in Temple City, we are going to do everything within our legal power to ensure that our city continues to stay safe. So thank you again, and let's continue to go on this journey together. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yu?
Happy New Year, everyone. Well, let me turn on my mic, turn it off, because I have a call here. Happy New Year, everyone. And I think I echo my fellow council member's sentiment, and we really appreciate you guys, the citizens' involvement, your support, and we'd love to see you here every city council meeting, because we're really here not doing our work, but we're doing your work. We're here to represent you. And also to echo what the mayor just said, the fact that Mayor Mann and I actually attended the El Monte council meeting is not because we two are more concerned than the rest of the council. Actually, we're authorized to be there by the rest, by the full council. Just what happened was the mayor and myself, but this city council here, we're here, we're doing, we're here for you. We're here, and we may or may not be in public, say certain things, because like council member Sternquist has said, I mean, there's certain things legally we can do, certain things may not, legally, we may not be to our best, and just to say it right out, so... But I want to thank you for your time, and we have heard you, and we're looking forward to, like council member Sternquist said, we're going to walk this journey together. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Fish?
Well, just about everything has been said, but I would like to say that not only are we all council members, but we are also residents. We all, we also want to live in a very safe community. We've, William's just starting, but we've all raised our kids here. They've gone to the schools, they play in the parks, they're all adults, and we don't want that to change, and we know that you don't want that to change. We're going to do our best, and it may not be easy. Again, we can't talk about a lot of things, because it is a delicate situation, and we do have to be careful. But I can absolutely guarantee you that we want to hear from you, we want you to call us and email us and tell us what, how you're feeling. You are not the only ones that are frustrated. Unfortunately, we get the bulk of the frustration, because we're up here, but we do want to make our community safe, and we want to make it better for our children, for our neighbors, for our friends. So please don't ever feel that you're not welcome to a meeting, like council member Sternquist said. There's many times where we're the only ones here. And, you know, that's a good sign, we always feel like that's a good sign, because everybody's happy, but it gets a little bit lonely when we're here a couple of times, a couple of times a month, and there's nobody in the audience. So please, you know, if you have a concern, and for me, I know I tell residents constantly, that if you hear a rumor, don't believe it. Rumors are very, very dangerous. If there's something that you have heard, and you don't agree with it, or it doesn't sound right, please call City Hall, call our city clerk, call one of the council members, or email us, and get the facts, and find out, because you are not going to want to hear from your brother-in-law's neighbor who heard that someone said something, because, you know, rumors, once they're out there, you can't get them back. So please remember that, and also, I just want to thank everybody for coming, and happy new year.
All right, thank you. I don't think I'm going to add too much to that.
It's hard.
But yeah, no, I appreciate everyone for being here tonight, and I believe a good number of you were probably at El Monte's meeting as well. I recognize a lot of faces in the audience, I may not remember all of your names, I'm sorry, but there have been a lot of names, and a lot of people I've met ever since this became a very public issue. What I've, what I've sort of picked up a little is, everyone's sort of found a different role, and I know a lot of you have been a bit more vocal in public than others, and others have been more quietly supporting those who are in the front line, so to speak. But I think everyone should appreciate that, you know, your mere presence at a certain meeting or event already speaks volumes about where you stand on a certain issue, where you collectively may stand on a certain issue. There may be varying degrees of disagreement on the details, but it seems like based on all the comments that we've heard today, a lot of us share very similar, if not the same, values and principles that are common amongst all Temple City residents. So it's always nice to see that, because I feel like those are some of the elements that really unify us as a community. This is not the first strange issue, or controversial issue, whatever you want to call it, that we've dealt with before. So again, I want to thank my colleagues for allowing us to function the way we have since this issue has been made public. And again, like I've mentioned before, but I'll say it again, some of you have mentioned you have things you have found or researched, please share those with us. Every little bit of support helps. So happy new year, everyone, and please, like Mayor Potem said, there's going to be information that may or may not be factual that you're hearing, especially now with the widespread use of social media. I would caution you to believe everything that's on those. Yeah, we don't, we don't want things to spiral into the rumor mill. I think that's, I think rumors are more detrimental to the effort than it is constructive. I think what everyone has done tonight, I would say is constructive, because you've shown up, you've voiced an opinion, you've brought out what you found, and we really need to start compiling all this stuff together. So that's all I have to say, and thank you very much.
Do you have one more to say there?
We have another section down here for additional comments, so if you want to, I could call you up. Item 15 is reimbursements, we have none, and our final segment of public comments, Mr. Poon?
No, no, hold on, he's going first.
Please, please come up. Well, I'll call you next.
One minute. Well, really, first time seeing our city council people. I never knew that you guys are so friendly. So it makes me less nervous. Anyway, my question is to Mr. Gregory Murphy, how do we find out what the progress is on this subject? You know, like what kind of legal action the city is taking, and what is the progress on that? How do we find out?
So Mr. Murphy?
Is it a website that we can visit?
Is that something you think we can answer at this point?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, for the benefit of the public, with respect to the El Monte cannabis facility, every step that the city has authorized our office or city staff to take has been posted on the city's website after that step has been taken. So as I mentioned earlier, I'm not at liberty, I cannot say ahead of time what we're going to do or not do. That's not within my power, and it's frankly not a good way to go about the practice of law. But I can say that when we take action, it's put on the city's website, and the city's social media accounts have also publicized it. So if you follow the city's social media accounts, and you look at the city's website, you will be able to find out what steps the city is taking.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. I think I saw Mr. Steve Stafford get up.
Mayor Mann, Mayor Potemper Fish, council members, I'd like to thank Mayor Mann and council member Yu for attending the meeting in El Monte. I thought that was a very good thing to do, it was very thoughtful. I know a lot of us here couldn't speak, because the things that I have found out, that no, they ran out of speaker cards, there's a lot of things that, there's a lot of areas to take action on the city of El Monte. In the coming weeks, I'm going to be talking to the DA's Public Integrity Office, because I think there's enough evidence that I've gathered, that they may end up taking action on the city. You can't violate people's handicap rights, can't violate their right to speak, you can't have, you cannot have an unlawful assembly where they've got a bunch of people that were, most of them were for it, and if you were against it, they just lashed out at you. They knocked a girl downstairs because she was for it, and the paramedics had to come and take her to Arcadia Methodist. This is very, and the police did nothing, they did zero. I got hit, they did zero. You know, there's a lot of areas here where they violated the law. And the lieutenant that did this was the same lieutenant that lashed out at our fire department and our battalion chiefs, Lieutenant Cano, C-A-N-O. He did not give a damn about the people there. He's too young to have done this, he's in his 30s, a bully, and I told him, anytime you have a situation like this, you have to assume the worst. He goes, well, I assume little. I said, that's why you had problems. And all he did to me this evening is bully me, treat me like dirt, and then lashed out at our fire department. And that's not the way for a city to act. I can tell you this, the chief of police was for this dispensary. He saw that I had problems, and he walked away from it. He had a big smile on his face when people couldn't get in. They did not want us in there. They wanted their people that were pro, and they wanted to get this done. Now, I can tell you that there was one planning commissioner, the planning commissioner that was in conflict of interest, she wouldn't leave, and they brought her a big, huge, beautiful bouquet of flowers, she walked out of the room. They were ready to take a vote, and she was going to be there voting and be in conflict of interest. I think you guys have done an excellent job, the way all of you spoke about this, I appreciate all of you speaking on this, and I'm ready anytime to help with this 100%. I'm working on it myself, I'm eventually going to get ahold of ADA, I got to help a friend of mine move all his stuff out of his house in El Snore, but in between that, when I have time, I'm going to be dealing with this. And believe me, ADA will take this serious. Just so you know, the people that take the complaints, they're like, they're like people like me that have rheumatoid arthritis, they're in wheelchairs, they're Army veterans, they paid a very good sum to take these complaints, they take them seriously. They take them like I do, I take my rheumatoid arthritis seriously, they take the complaints seriously. And they're very respectful, and they will deal with this. Thank you, and I wish all of you a happy new year.
Thank you, Steve. Ms. Feng Lu?
What I want to, what I want to talk is, the city council just said, encourage individuals to file lawsuits, actually, it is impossible. Why? Because City of El Monte basically blocked individuals to get any documents, any information. They violated, I requested some documents on December 4th. They took them like 24 days, give me a notice, they don't, they said that they don't want to give me other documents, I wasn't, you know, requested. So it is impossible, this is a big lawsuit, not like a fire to sue your neighbor for three chickens. This is a big, big lawsuit, over 20 marijuana facilities, four city councils got campaign funds from those developers, it's a big lawsuit, no, there's nothing individual can file this lawsuit, that's why we are here. We urgent City of Temple City, fire the lawsuit on behalf of the city, on behalf of residents of Temple City. We can support you, we can help, whatever we want to do, but we urgent the city to fire the lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lucy Lu?
In my rush earlier, I forgot to thank you. I know that the city council voted unanimously to send Mayor Mann and council member Yu to speak, so thank you very much for taking action. And on a separate subject, I couldn't pass the chance of speaking to such a large crowd and remind everybody, it's January 2019, we will be starting our neighborhood watch meetings again, third Thursday of every month, January through October. I don't know if the map's up yet, I haven't looked, actually, so if the map's up, go to templecity.us. It is? Great. So, or if you want to Google Temple City Neighborhood Watch Map 2019, it'll give you all the 10 areas, the 10 locations. It's the third Thursday of every month, January through October, 5:30 to 7:30, free lunch on the city, wonderful freshly made new soft taco, or freshly made soft tacos, and you'll find out about law enforcement, you'll find about emergency preparedness, whatever it is. This is a great chance for you, if you get the flyer in the mail, or on your doorstep, or what, if you get a flyer, please don't toss it, it's not junk mail, please read it and come to the meeting. I can't talk to them, so I'm looking at you, but I'm hoping they listen and they hear me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so if there are no more public comments, we are in adjournment. Good night.